Good evening, and welcome to the November 29th, 2022 meeting of the Town of Islay's zoning Board of Appeals. We'll start by reading the public notice this evening. After that, I'll begin to call the calendar. When your case is called, please come up to the podium here in the front and in a loud, clear voice, state your name and address for the record, and we'll address your application. All right. Notice is hereby given that the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of Islay will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 29th, 2022, at the Town Hall West, 401 West Main Street, Islay, New York, on the following applications that the times listed or soon thereafter as they may be reached. At such time, all interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard. Any disabled person who needs a sign language interpreter or special accommodations to attend the meeting, please contact us as early as possible. Dated 11/21/2022, Mr. Chairman, our first application tonight is number 868-22 Lamont Monroe. Permission to leave patio on side property line not having required setback of four feet and pool patio having a side yard of four feet and a rear yard of 5.5 feet instead of required six feet each, Residence B District, Northeast corner of Central Boulevard, number 1743, and Forest Place, Bay Shore, New York. Sir, your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Lamont Monroe, 1743 Central Boulevard, Bay Shore, New York.
Thank you.
Good evening, how are you tonight?
Good evening, I'm good, sir. How are you?
Good. You have a small patio on the side property line?
Yes.
Seems imminimis, the patio is a paver's. I'm assuming it's on the ground, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you have a pool patio, four and 5.5 instead of six, which we see them all the time.
Yes.
Seems imminimis. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Waxler, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Full favor?
Aye.
Application granted. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Next application number is 869-22 Christopher Four and Sierra Lawson. Permission to leave patio on rear property line not having required setback of four feet and a shed having a side yard of 0.9 feet instead of the required two feet, Residence B District, Northwest corner of Hauser Avenue, number 365, and Hummel Avenue, Holbrook, New York. Sir, your name and address for the record, please.
Christopher Four, 365 Hauser Avenue, Holbrook, New York.
Welcome.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good evening. How are you?
Yeah, it's just like the last application, you have a small paver patio on the rear property line.
Yes, sir.
Small vinyl sheds, a little bit too close, both seem to minimus. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? The board have any further questions? Mr. Waxler, I'll take a motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Full favor?
Aye.
Case granted. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Application number 870-22 Danielle Brantley Cumberbatch. Permission to erect second story addition, leaving a front yard of 23.8 feet instead of required 25 feet and floor area ratio of 26.24% instead of permitted 25% Residence B District, west side of Lombardi Boulevard, number 1352, 240 feet north of Chinango Drive, Bay Shore, New York. Ma'am, your name and address for the record, please.
Danielle Cumberbatch, 1352 Lombardi Boulevard, Bay Shore, New York.
Welcome.
Good evening, how are you tonight?
Hi, I'm great.
Good. You seeking permission to erect a second story addition, a little close in the front yard, but your house holds a little less than 25 feet two at one point, and your floor area ratio is a little high, but we see up to 30% here, although the code says 25. I think you'll be all right. We'll take a vote. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? The board have any questions? Mr. Waxler, I'll take a motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Full favor?
Aye.
Case granted.
Next application number 871-22 Andrew Murray. Permission to leave shed having a side yard of 2.9 feet instead of required four feet and shed having 11.3 feet behind the front line of dwelling instead of the required 20 feet, Residence B District, south side of Fairtown Road, number 28, 600 feet west of Stein Drive, Bay Shore, New York. Sir, your name and address for the record, please.
Andy Murray, 126 Smith Avenue, Islay, New York.
How are you tonight?
Good.
So you have a shed a little too close, we see them a lot, you heard that the past few applications, and 11.3 behind the front line of the dwelling. How long has that shed been up?
Since seven years. It was there when I bought the house.
Okay. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Waxler, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Full favor?
Aye.
Case granted.
Next application number 872-22 Matthew Nardowitz and Danielle Nardowitz. Permission to install in-ground pool leaving a rear yard of 10 feet instead of the required 14 feet and pool patio and pool deck resulting in rear yard landscaping of 28.8% instead of the required 40%, Residence A District, North side of Maryland Street, number 211, 222.3 feet east of Country Village Lane, East Islay, New York. Sir, your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Matt Nardowitz, 211 Maryland Street, East Islay, New York.
How are you tonight, sir?
I'm doing good.
Excuse me one second. Confirming with the brains of the operation over here. Yes. So you're, I'm sorry about that, so you're looking to install in-ground pool, rear yard of 10. We'd like to have one side, either rear or side yard comply what you do, and you have a rear yard landscaping of 20.8 instead of required 40. You're a little short on that?
Yes.
Um, typically normal.
That's fine.
All right. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Waxler, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Full favor?
Aye.
Case granted, sir. Have a good night.
Next application number 873-22 Peter and Dorothy Small. Permission to leave pool equipment having a side yard of five feet instead of required six feet and a shed having 9.5 feet behind the front line of dwelling instead of required 20 feet, Residence B District, Southeast corner of Pease Lane, number 867, and Union Boulevard, West Islay, New York. Sir, ma'am, your names and addresses for the record, please.
Dorothy Small, 867 Pease Lane, West Islay, New York, 11795.
Let me guess, that's Peter.
Yes.
Great. How are you tonight?
Very good.
Very good. You have some pool equipment, a little bit too close, I think we'll be okay with that, and a shed not having 20 feet behind the front line of dwelling. I'm assuming that shed's been up for a while?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? The board have any further questions? Mr. Waxler, I'll take a motion.
Chairman, make a motion.
Second.
Full favor?
Aye.
Case granted. Have a great night.
Thank you so much.
Bye, safe.
Next application number 874-22 Tiffany Hayes and David Hayes. Permission to erect one and two-story additions leaving a side yard of 5.8 instead of required 18 feet, total side yards of 23.8 feet instead of required 36 feet to leave two sheds, having side yards of one foot and 1.2 feet instead of required two feet each and driveways having side yards of 2.5 feet and 2.8 feet instead of required four feet each. Residence AA District, south side of Cedarhurst Street, number 166, 300 feet west of Belmore Avenue, Islay Terrace, New York. Ms. Trelle, welcome. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Roxanne Trelle, Dynamic Expediting Services, with offices at 1040 Terry Road, Ronconcombe, New York.
You have your trustee assistant with you tonight?
I do. We just came from hitting lessons, so she gets stuck here. So we are, I'll start with the easier parts of the application.
Nah, we gotta start with the harder part of this one. Come on. How do we get 5.8 instead of 18?
So I did look at the area to see if this would even be a feasible application. What I was able to uncover was about six or seven houses that were pretty close to the property line. Unfortunately, none of them were actually before the board, but we were able to get a copy of a CO and a survey for two houses. One is at 185 Cedarhurst, the other is at 137 Amityville, which show here, I want to, it's, it's a little bit unclear as to what the actual number is, but they look to be around 10 feet on one of the houses.
The CO shows it?
It doesn't show it on the CO, it shows it on the survey, and it doesn't show that it was before the board, but there, these surveys are pretty old, so it's, it's really hard to see the exact number. So I did bring a copy of them if you would like to see, just to show how close it is to the property line. I'd say the closer one was 137 Amityville, where it does look to be around 10 feet.
What's next door to this parcel? On the side where you want to leave 5.8 feet on, I would imagine that's the one story issue?
Yes.
Is it both or one?
It's, so it's, it's the one-story addition, and then half of the second story would maintain that same side yard.
Okay. So you're talking about two-story structure, like a six feet from the side property. What's next door?
There is a dwelling next door to it, however, the dwelling is about 30 feet from the property line, so they're pretty far away from each other.
So then your argument is essentially that it almost has the same result as if they were compliant at minimum level on both sides, right?
Correct.
Saying it's a good argument, if that's true.
Yes.
Best one I could come up with.
Same here.
Yeah. I, I just don't know, and I'm, I'm looking at this area that we have, it seems to be, from the view of compliant neighborhood, how we can go 5.8 on the side yard. I just don't know.
So I, I did look at the plans that were drawn up. What's being proposed on that first-story addition is a straight garage. It's not living space, they just want to build a garage on the side of their house where the driveway can pull right up to it. The second-story addition doesn't go over the portion of the garage, it's more towards the rear of the dwelling, and on that second story, it would be their master bedroom. And like I said, they chose this side of the property because the neighbor was situated so far away from them.
I'm sorry, I was engrossed in something else, so, but they're compliant now at 18 feet.
Correct.
And they want to go to 5.8?
Yes.
Not 17, not 16, not 15, 5.8?
Well, right, they're compliant at 18, but they want to build a garage, so it wouldn't be, it would be impossible to, to go just a small amount.
But what rationale do we have to give? I don't know. 70% of the opposition.
Well, there were quite a few houses, I would say about six or seven, that were closer to the property line. When, they were not granted by this board, and even this survey that I have, it doesn't show a ZBA approval. All it shows is that the house was built sometime in the 80s, but I did bring a copy of both of those COs and surveys. The other properties, they only had the CO on file, there were no surveys on file with the town for me to bring forth.
How would we say no to the next applicant? Right after he's going to say no, say you have 18, you make a 5.8, how do we say no?
I would, we would have to look at the nature and character of that neighborhood.
We'll say the same thing. It's a house, it's 18 feet, and it's required, and it's in one garage, we have one garage, without going 5.8, what can we say? I think Ms. Trelle's, what she said earlier, this was important, about this discussion between she and I, was that, look, what makes this one perhaps powerful and others not is the fact that the joint neighbor to be affected, their house is 30 feet away from the property line. So if you add 30 feet there and the 5.8 feet that they're giving on their property, that's 35.8. And if both houses were minimally compliant at 18 feet each, you'd have a 36-foot distance between the two structures, and that would be fully compliant, so that the effect of this on these, under these unique circumstances, with these parcels, is almost the same as if you had two compliant structures who are right up against the minimum legal requirement.
Okay.
And again, I'm not saying that that carries the day, I'm just saying that that's essentially how I understand the law.
But we have never, as a board, allowed an applicant to use the property next door to say, say, look, that has no practical effect. Okay, I just wondered, is there any, I wanted to make sure what we're missing.
No, it's a mitigation.
I would say so, and I think the fact that it's going to be a garage and not a living space on that first story, you know, there's not going to be any infringement on privacy or anything like that.
But they want to make a two-story, huh?
Two-story to the rear, so the, the front half of it.
Who is an architect working, I mean, who said this was a good applicant, or this was a worthwhile application?
I think what happened is they've looked at the area, and like I said, they found the same houses because they live around there. They looked around, they saw a couple of houses that were a little bit closer to the property line. They actually did their own due diligence, found these surveys and COs, and saw that they were closer to the property line, and it showed it on a survey, so they tried to get the most out of their sight, and really, they just really want that garage, this is the biggest deal.
Did you state one of your surveys had a 10-foot side yard?
So the number is very unclear, but it looks to be about 10 feet.
So let's just say that survey, you can read it, and there's 10 foot, it's still 10, not 18, and you, your requirement says it's 5.8. I just don't know how we can do it. I don't know how we do it. That's just, that's a huge relaxation.
Would we be able to reduce it to the 10 feet instead of the 18?
Well, we have to first learn how many are at 10, we don't have any of that information.
Would you like an adjournment so you can get some more information, or no?
Yeah, I can take an adjournment.
Well, you can. What are you, I'm putting up a ticket next year.
We didn't get there.
Yeah. Well, they're grinding their teeth.
Put her all to February and March, John. Oh, it's an inside joke.
We can pass January 1st, it's good with you.
Yeah, right. Well, I mean, I don't have a problem with an adjournment, but.
Yeah, and then, and then point it back, we're, I'm lucky, I'm lucky to be able to, so.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with it, an adjournment.
You're taking an adjournment?
Sure.
So we'll keep it open in adjournment until you can speak to Mary and get back on the calendar?
Yes.
Defer to the, especially the secretary.
The boss.
The boss, sounds good.
By the end of the night. Did you any more adjournments on the table?
Okay. Me too.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? The board have any further questions?
I moved to adjourn the entire calendar.
Until January 2nd.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Full favor?
Next application was previously adjourned from November 15th, 2022. Number 835-22 Raoul A Garcia. Permission to leave a roof over 3657, having a side yard of eight feet instead of required 14 feet, roof over patio 11.5 feet by 15.7 feet, having rear yard of one foot instead of required four feet, driveway having side yard of three feet and patio having side yards of one foot each instead of required four feet, and rear landscaping of 17.3% instead of the required 40% Residence B District, North side of House 6 Street, number 21, 300 feet east of Lincoln Avenue, Brentwood, New York. Ms. Trelle, welcome back, and if you could start by please reminding us why this was adjourned on November 15th.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Roxanne Trelle, Dynamic Expediting Services, with offices at 1040 Terry Road, Ronconcombe, New York. We were previously before the board, however, the rear yard landscaping was left off of the call of the meeting, so we had to re-advertise.
The, it seems like the entire rear yard's paved.
Yes, I would say so. I would say that is a correct observation.
As an Italian, I love pavers, but it's not the whole yard.
Yeah.
The whole yard is paved.
So I did speak with Deirdre earlier today, and what we had stated was if we could bring it down to maybe like between 20 and 25% instead of the required, I'm sorry, bring it up. I'm, I'm still working back with the rear yard occupancy, instead of the required 40%. Should that be agreeable to the board?
So it's 25.
I believe you just granted 28.8 tonight. Have to see what area that was in.
Yeah, it did, and they run off.
We did. All right, 28.8.
Okay.
Mr. Waxler said that, I'm.
For those two flat levers, Sullivan and I, we don't run, we stay.
So rear yard landscape at 28.8, we have patio, one instead of two, one, two instead of required four, that's easy, driveway, three, it's easy.
Yep.
Roofed over patio.
That's attached to the shed.
Attached to the shed, yeah.
One instead of four, and the roof over the entrance is, the roof over just covers just the entrance part, doesn't protrude any further.
Never to be enclosed?
Never to be enclosed.
All right, so 28.8, you good with that?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Messina, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to deny so much of that portion of the application, since the areas with rear yard landscaping of 17.3% instead of the required 40%. We move to grant that request at 28.8% and we move to grant the guidance.
Full favor?
Next application number 749-22, this was adjourned from October 18th, 2022. Lawrence Tuminia. Permission to leave carport at 10 feet by 23 feet on side property line, not having required setback of 14 feet, driveway on side property line, not having required setback of four feet, Residence B District, South East corner of West Second Street, number 38, and Lakeview Port, Montoppe, New York. Ms. Trelle, welcome back, and again, I ask you to start the presentation by reminding us why this was adjourned.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Roxanne Trelle, Dynamic Expediting Services, with offices at 1040 Terry Road, Ronconcombe, New York. So at the last hearing, we were talking about the carport that's on the side property line instead of having the required 14 feet, and at that hearing, I had stated that when I had done a survey of the area, there were only about six houses on this block, and every single house was pretty much on their neighbor's property line. However, I didn't have a chance to bring a copy of the COs and surveys, so we adjourned so that I could bring a copy of the COs and surveys and photos, so that could be presented to the board. I was able to bring forth three of the COs and surveys that do show this, as well as photos of the houses on the property lines.
Are those grants, or are they just there?
The houses were built that way.
That's, that's what my question was. They were, they were built that way pursuant to a variance application, or pursuant to the benefits and code that necessarily required?
These houses were non-conforming dwellings back in the 50s and 60s, but it's, they're, on the block, there's only six houses, and all, every single one is, is on the property line.
But we've had this discussion before, and can non-conforming become the nature and character neighborhood if they're all illegal?
Sure.
I, I don't think so. Well, I mean, if everybody does it illegally, then it's okay?
I remember when I was on the other side of this table one time, handing up a decision by Cardinal Thomas Grant, and it's pretty cool, so, and we said exactly. I'm not saying that you have to agree with him, I'm just saying that that's, there are judicial decisions out there which say exactly that, so.
So, along those, suppose you live on a dead end with three other houses, and you, and they all say, hey, let's all build right into the property line, let's go front, back, violate every code we could potentially find, and then, so, we all do it, that's nature and character?
Well, I don't know that three in a 500-foot radius or even a 200-foot radius really count today.
Well, let's say those were the only homes as a dead end?
Well, then maybe it does.
Wow.
Again, again, according to that decision, it would. I'm not saying I agree with it, I'm just saying that there's case law.
Would this be a good case to reserve and allow the remaining board members?
Well, this, um.
Really not trusting. Without the chairman's steady hand to guide you.
He'll be guiding us in a different way. Spiritually, but we'll be all right.
Very good.
And you will be guiding us post-mortem in that court, not you.
This was a case, isn't this the case where a whole load of people came up and complained about this?
No, it was the same night, but it was my case prior to this one. Don't worry, I still remember.
All these people are not here to oppose your applicant.
No, they are not. I gave them all candy before I came up here.
We do have a denial, though, of side yard.
That's for a second-story addition.
I'm suggesting we reserve, maybe we'll put counsel, counsel all the way at the end, would you look into that? Can a whole gaggle of non-conforming use change, give nature and character, so this could compel us to grant? Thank you. I expect tomorrow morning.
You expect a lot of things.
Yeah, that, I don't think I'm going to get it. My expectations are high.
There you go.
If we are going to reserve decision with.
We need to hear from the public.
Okay.
So ZBA allowed a nine-foot house?
So there's a prior grant of nine?
A ZBA, yeah, for the CL, the CL for the side yard of nine, one-story addition.
So, and what's the 14 instead of nine?
It's on the property line, the carport.
The carport's on the property line.
Now, what is the setback required?
14.
14, yeah. So that's also something that I want to think about when applicant comes in and says, oh, give me a six-foot relaxation. Oh, now I want to go right, so when does it end? Now, I'm already halfway there, I can work with you more. So, I think it's a continuous rest.
One former chairman called that the Pac-Man.
The Pac-Man, yes, he did. And with the great legal minds.
Only Ms. Passaro gets that.
Yes. They said with the great legal minds, that will be left.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Waxler, I'll take a motion.
I'm going to make a motion that we reserve, second.
Full favor?
Next application number 875-22 Nicole and Daniel Tencreo. Permission to erect.
Have a good night, Ms. Trelle.
Edition 14 feet by 24.4 feet, leaving a side yard of 10.20 feet instead of required 14 feet, floor area ratio of 26% instead of permitted 25%, and to establish two-family use on, pursuant to this, such as 1941 Residence B District, East Side of 43rd Street, number 43, 165 North, 44th Street, Islay, New York. Sorry, your name and address for the record, please.
Robert Costello, 33, Constable Lane, Levittown, New York, 11756. C.O.S.T.E.L.L.O.
How are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Would you like me to give a little?
Yes, same case, sure.
So, I'm here tonight representing Ms. Tredo, and this is Tredo, and they're proposing to add a two-family use, for a family use, for Mr. Tredo's mother to move in with them. She's been living with them, but they, they want to set up a more permanent situation with, with a kitchen for her on the first floor since she's partially disabled. She had a stroke a few years ago, she's been living with them since then, and since then, they've had another child, and they really need, need more room in the house, you know, they have three kids of their own.
Sure. Do you, do you know if they have, if the area holds 10 instead of 14? Do you have any precedent?
I, I didn't look that up. What, my, my thought on it was, it, it works with the aggregate side yard setback. The location of the house, it really doesn't give us any space, we'd have to put like a small addition on each side. This particular side had the most side yard, and next to it is, is actually the backyard of another house, so that house is about over 100 feet away.
Yeah, that's, I was thinking, there is.
Yeah, unfortunately, since our system is down, it'd be nice to know what exactly exists and what precedent is, and to be fair, the applicant and the town, we just don't have the information.
Sure. Sure, I mean, they were, they were looking for this addition so that they would have, you know, enough room for the mother to come in and get around.
From a zoning perspective.
Sure.
We know they want it, and they may be hard to reach.
Sure.
Nobody ever come back to that, I really don't want that.
Yeah.
We need to know who they're pressing.
Sure.
Just for a beer, if you please.
I would.
So, Mr. Wexler's a challenge, where you can decide without precedent?
Nah, I'm just letting the president know that.
Come on, Mr. Wexler.
I need president.
Rise to the occasion, sir.
I need to hang on to something.
And I know earlier you said, you know, it doesn't matter what's on the neighbor's property, but in this particular case, it's on a curb, and, and the neighbor is actually the backyard, so at most, they could be just twenty-five feet away, the house existing is about a hundred fifty feet away.
Our concern is just, we grant this, we have to grant it, we now just reduce it to fourteen ten entirely.
This wasn't...
That's something that's not as... I am very, I don't sleep at night.
But, you know, we do, Mr. Wexler.
I believe you.
We, we do, uh, we do, we are in zoning, so that... Yeah, the idea of it possibly being a ten-foot side yard is very great, right?
We think, we think maybe you have your North Arrow, and we're figuring it out now.
Oh, I went the wrong way?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, that's south, it's backwards.
Oh, minor.
The wrong way.
Okay, so now we can see the side yards in the neighborhood better. So until nineteen ninety-five, residence, residence B zoning allowed one-story houses to have ten-foot side yards, so it is entirely possible that there are ten-foot side yards in this neighborhood.
I think we do.
The proposed addition is one-story, and it's slab-on-grade, so it's pretty much as low as it can be.
Can, can you tell, let's see, do we know whether it... Normally, we have a big electrical thing up there.
Sure.
Screen, a monitor.
Fancy technology.
Yeah. Mary Wood.
So, nineteen ninety-five, two-story houses, and these started to acquire fourteen, it's tempting.
So you think it's mostly ten-foot?
And then nineteen ninety-five, we're looking for the least of its, until nineteen ninety-four, that begins with a house, we needed a different type of...
So you think it's thickly built, it was developed before nineteen... Okay.
Because it's once...
So, one-story addition, the floor area ratio is twenty-six, instead of twenty-five, we see up to thirty, two-family families only based on medical, everything seems to be in order, correct, ma'am?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Wexler, I'll take a motion. Two families. On favor? Have a great night, see you in three years.
Thank you.
Next application, rate seventy-six dash twenty-two, Donna Rae Niedert, and Kim M. Kramer, permission to leave hot tub on Bayport Avenue, twenty-six feet, set of required four feet, shed out of two feet, four feet by front lawn dwelling, set of required twenty feet, Resident B District, east side of Bayview Avenue, number four sixty-nine, three hundred and twenty feet, South Davis Street, Bayport, New York. Ladies, your names and addresses for the record, please.
Donna Rae Niedert, four sixty-nine, Bayport Avenue, Bayport, New York, one-one-seven-zero-five.
And Kim Mary Kramer, same address, four-six-nine, Bayport Avenue, Bayport, New York, one-one-seven-zero-five.
Welcome, how are you tonight?
Very good, thank you, very good, thank you.
So, hot tubs, they hold a pool setback, I can't stand that code, I'm sorry. You can't cannibal in it, it's not a pool.
Don't hold back.
That's just my opinion, we'll take a vote on it. Uh, the shed having, uh, shed having two-point-four instead of twenty behind a front lawn dwelling, how long has that shed been up?
The shed actually replaced, a shed that was on a prior CL from two thousand and one.
So it's been there? That shed has been there?
Yeah.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion. On favor? Okay, she's great, have a good night.
Thank you, guys, good night.
Next application, rate seventy-seven dash twenty-two, Christine and Ryan Pembroke, permission, Pembroke, excuse me, permission to leave six-foot fence, having second front yard of five point three feet, set of required ten feet, Resident A District, northwest corner of Bayview Avenue, number two oh four, and Harriet Road, Bayport, New York, is there anyone here on this application? Second call, please, Mr. Chairman.
Second call.
Next application, previously adjourned from June eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, Weston Adams Equity, number three forty dash twenty-one, Ms. Passaro?
There's been a request for an adjournment of that case, they said they can take any case after November thirtieth, so I would suggest we hear it on January tenth.
I would respect the request, Mr. Chairman, that being the case of the age of this, that this be marked as a final adjournment, and if they fail to appear, they'd be dismissed.
Second, thank you.
On favor?
Next application, number eight seventy-eight dash twenty-two, Anthony D. Belanger, permission to leave driveway outside property line, not having a required setback of four feet, and front yard occupancy of seventy-four point zero two percent instead of permitted thirty-five percent, patio having side yard of one point seven five feet, set of required four feet, moved back under your property line, not having a required setback of six feet, and your yard landscape of twelve percent, set of forty percent, through the six-foot lattice fence, the top of two-point-five-foot wall, having provided either a roof of five feet, instead of permitted eight feet, and side yard of one point seven five feet, instead of required four feet, Resident B District, east side of Green Avenue, number one oh one, ninety-five feet, north of Central Street, Sabre, New York, sir, your name and address for the record, please.
Nicholas Capucci, C A P P U C C I, work with Taro Canal Architects, twelve-hundred Veterans Highway, Suite one-twenty, Hopkamie, New York. Good evening, I am here with, actually, homeowner, Tony.
Hang on one sec.
Getting our bearings.
That's how I do it, too.
Sorry.
So, no problem, so we are here today, I'm here today with homeowners here with me today, agent for the applicant, and what we are requesting is a slew of things in order to obtain the CL on the property. We did an addition for, for this gentleman back in two thousand and six, and it's just been an ongoing process through the town, and we're trying to close out and get the CL, and this is why we're in front of you today with all these requests. So I guess the first request to address is the, the driveway going all the way to the property line. So it's a zero-foot setback, as the request of the four-foot that is required. Other things that come about with the driveway, it's a U-shaped driveway, it's all mostly gravel, one portion is gravel and asphalt, the other portion is all gravel, and so that leads us to a seventy-four point zero two percent instead of the thirty-five percent permitted.
Which we, we don't see, so we'd have to cut that back.
Um, well, I'm here in front of you guys today to, to work with you, see what you guys have, uh...
We normally see it for forty.
And options, and what we can do.
Forty-five, you're at seventy-four.
Forty, and again, with additional even fifty percent or sixty percent, forty is standard.
The code says thirty-five, we give it forty. If there, if there was, you know, if there was a, if there was a W L line, extenuating services, really busy road, we may, you know, reason for them having to turn around and back up, they can't get out, that's not the case here, so we may see a little bit fir-, we maybe get a little more, but that's not the case here, and that, they're gonna have to cut that back.
Well, there is commercial right across the street.
I know the area very well, I know, I know very well. I'm not saying there's not commercial across the street, but there's no extenuating circumstance that they need seventy-four percent in the front yard occupancy.
So forty would be the max that you guys would be looking for? Now, even if, say if we play and get rid of some of the other variances along the way right now.
However you get the forty, you can get that one.
From the front.
Like you can get any color you want, as long as it's black, right?
Yeah.
So you can get whatever percentage you want, as long as it's forty percent.
Forty percent.
You can go right there with that. Um, then we have a, the patio, we'll do the patio with one point seven five, so the patio is on the, uh...
It's on the north side, right by Mason patio on grade, and just pavers right next to the barbecue, and that leads to one point seven five.
It's just that one little corner right there, I see that, that seems de minimis. We got pool deck on rear property line.
So that's the same thing, the pool deck is in the back instead of the six-foot, we're going right up to the property line at zero. Now, there is actually talk about...
Wait, hold on, hold on one sec, how?
What's it adjacent to, that it's right on the property line, what's that of a property?
Residential house, yeah, behind him. It's actually a backyard.
Is the pool deck on the ground, or is it up and...
On grade.
It's on grade?
Pool deck on grade, yeah, it's in-ground pool. CL, uh, C O C back in twenty-four March seventy-six, for the pool.
Okay, rear yard landscape in twelve instead of forty, we just heard two of these tonight, it said twenty-eight point eight, as we went up to.
Yeah.
That seemed like an odd number, but that's what we decided when, the last two applications that came in front of us are rear yard, so you gotta, you're at twelve percent, you gotta get it up to twenty-eight point eight.
Yeah, so, again, so that kind of brings me back to that, uh, deck on grade at, at, at zero, uh, zero feet, we're actually gonna probably remove that, and then give a line of trees and landscape along that.
However you get to twenty-eight point eight is fine, you just have to have a rear, rear yard landscaping of twenty-eight point eight percent. That's, that's what we're gonna go with tonight.
Okay.
So however you remove, whatever you need to remove to get there, that's, that's fine, you just have to get twenty-eight point eight.
Okay.
So we amending the application to remove the request for the deck of the rear property?
No, I mean, if that's okay, and, and we could get that approved, let's keep that, and I'll look for other ways to do the twenty-eight point eight percent, I mean...
But if you're removing the deck, like you just said?
Well, if you guys are gonna grant that, then I might not remove that portion of it, or even some portion of it, and leave some portion there, wherever I could get the twenty-eight point eight percent.
Okay.
But yeah, well, I'll go for that still at the, the zero foot, and instead of that six-foot requirement for the, for the pool deck.
The height of the lattice fence?
That's not an issue, I spoke to my client, and we'll chop that down to eight feet.
Okay. And side yard at one point seven five instead of required four?
Well, I think that was that Mason patio that we were talking about before, and that really should be, um, the driveway side, which, which we were addressing. Which really should be at a zero foot, um...
I think it's the block wall they're talking about, it's one point seven five.
On the north side?
It's only two and a half feet high?
Yeah, on the north side, that was, that was with the lattice and everything as well.
Right, but it needs a side yard setback if the wall is over eighteen inches in height.
Okay.
Which it is.
Which it is, yes, it's thirty inches.
So it needs four feet itself.
Alright, so then, yeah, so, I mean, we want to keep that wall, so I, we'll address that tonight then, too.
What is the trailer in the north west?
The trailer's being removed, trailer is, is just a storage trailer that's gonna be removed from the property, and they're gonna be proposing that shed that we have on that side yard right there.
Are we okay with that? Alright, so I think we got through everything, you're gonna do, um, the front yard occupancy, you're gonna get down to forty percent, um, the six-foot lattice, the top of the wall, you're gonna get down to eight feet.
Correct.
So we're gonna just remove that and deny that from the application, you're gonna get that down to conforming, uh, the rear yard, well, rear yard landscaping, you're gonna get up to twenty-eight point eight percent?
Yep.
I think we got everything. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion. On favor?
Thank you.
You have a great night.
Next application, number seven sixty dash twenty-two, Baron Gareda Garcia, and Maravany Gareda Garcia, permission to use two-family, family use only, pursuant to I C P code sixty-sixty-eight, which four nineteen point one, Resident B District, northwest corner of Bullard, Bullard, New York, two inches, one block, Bay Shore, sir, your name and address for the record, please.
Western Room, it is Byron Gareda Garcia.
I'm sorry, what was, what was your name?
Byron Gareda Garcia.
And how are you related to the applicant?
Well, when I bought the house, it's already with the...
You're Byron, correct?
Yes.
How are you, sir?
I'm sorry, I didn't use...
Yeah, my sister is not here.
Can you pull the mics out?
Okay, so you're looking to seek permission to use two-family, family use only?
Correct.
Uh, it's based on medical, your mother is gonna be living with you? Everything seems to be in order in the file, correct, ma'am?
Yes, everything's in order.
Alright, does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Wexler, I'll take a motion. On favor? See you in three years.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Next application, number eight seventy-nine dash twenty-two, Jomas Objud. I am sorry.
He'll tell us.
I'll, I'll, I'll just apologize now. Permission to erect the second-story addition and two-story additions, leaving side yard of thirteen point six feet, set of required fourteen feet, set of side yard of seven point seven feet, set of required twenty-eight feet, had twenty-nine point four-six feet, set of required twenty-eight feet, and four area ratio of twenty-nine point nine percent instead of permitted five percent. The district number sixty-nine, seven fifty-five, the rest of Dallas, for the size of New York. I'll start with the apology, please, your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, I'm his wife, Stephen Akowski, sixty-nine, I'm just speaking for him.
Okay, but how do you pronounce his name?
Objud. Objud. Oh, yeah. Objud, O B R Z U D.
Is Z silent?
Uh, I don't know. We're Polish, so we don't do the silent.
What part of Poland?
He's from, yeah, he's from Gdansk, I'm from all the way down.
My great-grandmother came from Warsaw.
Oh, wow, interesting.
Awesome, how are you tonight?
Good. Been better.
You've been better?
It's just so stressful.
Don't be stressed out, we don't bite, it's easy. So you're here seeking permission to erect a two-story, uh, second-story and two-story additions, leaving a little short on the side yard, thirteen-six instead of fourteen, which is de minimis, we see that a lot, um, we have a little height of twenty-nine point four-six instead of twenty-eight, and then floor area ratio of twenty-eight, I'm sorry, twenty-nine point nine-seven instead of twenty-five, we see at the thirty, so that's good, I'm just not sure about the height, do we...
What's the reason for the height?
He stole. No. What's the reason for the height? You know, we want to upgrade the house with everything, and, um...
Do we, do we have, do we have a baseline, what's, you're just in there?
It doesn't, it doesn't have a height, though. It just says one and a half stories breaking frame. Oh, gotcha, sorry about that.
We have no idea what you're wanting to... I'm not...
Is that, is that just at the peak?
Yeah.
Just at the peak, right?
Yes, yes.
Sure. So just at the peak, you're saying, that height is, okay, okay, you guys good?
Yep.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Wexler, I'll take a motion. On favor? Application granted.
Oh my God, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, thank you.
Have a great holiday, take care.
Next application, rate eighty dash twenty-two, Raymond Lopez and Judith Escalera Lopez, permission to establish an accessory apartment resulting in floor area ratio of twenty-nine twenty-eight percent, set of permitted five percent, leave one-story addition ten feet by ten feet, having a rear yard of seventeen feet, set of required twenty-five feet, two sheds, having rear yard zero point four feet, zero point six feet, set of required two feet each, tax on the second front yard, of one point nine feet, set of required twenty feet, Resident B District, northeast corner of Hummel Avenue, Molly Boulevard, Hope of New York, folks, welcome, your name and address for the record, please.
Judith Escalera Lopez, one twenty, one-two-five-seven, Hummel Avenue, Hope of New York.
How are you tonight? Don't be nervous.
Raymond Lopez, twelve fifty-seven, Hummel Avenue, Hope of New York, seven four.
So you're here seeking up permission for an accessory apartment? Uh, your floor area ratio is twenty-nine point eight instead of twenty-five, but we see up to thirty, so that's a check right there. Um, one-story addition, you have a ten by twenty, um, leaving rear yard of seventeen, it's, it's just a screen porch?
Yes.
There's no electric or plumbing or anything in it, or, it's not like living space, right?
It's a Florida room, it's got the conditioning, glass, you know, you know, windows.
Sure. Two sheds, rear yard of point four and point six instead of two feet, that's de minimis, tech having second front yard of one... Deck having second front yard of one point nine, instead of required twenty. Oh, that's on Molly Boulevard side?
Yeah, we have, the fence itself is two feet away from the, um...
Yeah, i- is it deck on, on grade? Sorry, is it on the ground a deck, or is it raised?
No, it's raised. It's like a little trellis.
How high, about?
About a foot.
A foot?
About a foot high.
Foot high?
Yeah.
We're good at a foot high, right? Yeah? Yeah, I mean, fifteen. You do have a shallow lot. Alright, um, so the apartment is four hundred ninety-three square feet. You're gonna have to modify the driveway to comply. You know that, right?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Alright. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Messina, I'll take a motion. Hold on, favor? Application granted.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Have a great night.
I appear to three years, though, for the, uh, for the accessory apartment, so we'll see, we'll hear from you in three years for the accessory apartment.
Next application, number eighty-eighty-one dash twenty-two, Shakir Tareem. Permission to erect a second story addition. The front yard of twenty-two, twenty-six feet, set at a required twenty-eight feet. Height of thirty feet, set at a required eighteen feet, has rear condition south side, front first, two, three hundred fifty-nine feet. East of M H Bay Shore, New York. Man, you're welcome. Your name and address for the record.
My name is Christine Fay, Accurate Expediting, two eighty-six A Belmont Avenue, West Babylon, New York.
How are you tonight, Ms. Lynn?
I am okay, well. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My clients would like to ask permission to erect a second story addition, leaving a front yard of twenty-two point six instead of twenty-five, and a height of thirty feet instead of twenty-eight. Uh, the reason for the height variance is that they chose this design to maintain a certain pitch for snow, rain, and aesthetics. A higher ridge, in this case, will look proportionate. The only part of the house, uh, that is the thirty feet is the peak. Uh, it would not cause any effect, adverse effect to the neighbors. Although the hardship is self-created, we feel it's not substantial. Would like the board to consider approving this application.
So it's just a peak, that's the thirty?
Yes.
Okay, in the front, uh... I think the house, you're going directly above the house now, or?
Yes.
So it holds as short a front yard as it is, right?
Yes.
Alright, does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion. Hold on, favor? Application granted.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Next application, number eighty-eighty-two dash twenty-two, Andrew Albate. Permission to erect a one story addition, fourteen feet, five feet, seventeen feet. Side yard of seventy point three, instead of a required fourteen feet. Shed having eighteen point five feet by one point one, instead of a required twenty feet. And shed having side yard of one point five feet, and rear yard of one point nine feet, instead of a required two feet each. President's address with inside, down south, one point seventeen. Hundred eighty-one point six one feet, south of Blue Lane, Hope of New York. Sir, your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good evening, folks. My name is Andrew Albate, A-L-B-A-T-E.
How are you tonight, sir?
Alright, how are you?
Good, so you're seeking permission to, uh, erect a one story addition that's fifty percent relaxation on the side?
Correct. It's a garage.
I understand. It's just, this is A zoning. I know you, you probably hear earlier than we talked about this in B zoning, where most of the side yards, uh, were ten feet, but this is A zoning. They're fourteen, so we have to have, do you, do you have any precedent in the area that, that has approved zoning board?
There are at least twelve houses on the block that are originally built with two car garage. It's, mine is the same house, mine just didn't have it, so they actually have less than eight feet on, actually on mall twelve.
Sorry. You're sitting big screen.
Yes. It's over there.
So the, the homes that you stated are built with two car garages, are they holding, to your knowledge, a side yard, or?
Uh, I, I went around and I kinda took a look, and yeah, they are holding small side yards. It's original. I'm original to the block since nineteen sixty-nine, so I've been on the same block fifty-two years. So those houses are original. Built that way. I'd just like to make mine walk to the same.
We're looking at an area.
Okay.
And it's almost impossible to tell. And since I'm the, heard our computer system down.
Yeah, read the news.
I think we're just gonna have to reserve decision and be able to look into this. I apologize, but I don't, we don't wanna...
No, no, I understand. I, I, you know, it is what it is. Unfortunately, I know we're going with technology, and I guess, you know, Suffolk's had a lot of trouble with the, the hacking and stuff, so I understand. Yeah. That's correct.
Yeah. What is, you're building a one car garage, you said?
Yeah, just a one car garage attached to that one.
So what's, do you know the na-, the most narrow you can go on the one car garage to build?
Say again?
You know the most narrow you could go?
That would really be about it. That's, yeah, it was kinda, I mean, the, it wouldn't be worth it. It would just be, you know, less than six inches to take off. Other than that, it really wouldn't work.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? I'll make a motion to reserve decision. Hold on, favor? We'll do the best we can as quick as we can for you, sir.
Absolutely, I appreciate it.
Looking for that, alright?
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Application was previously adjourned from October eighteen, twenty twenty-two, with number six seventy, seven sixty-three, Steve, twenty-two. Steven Brill and Alan Mullin. Permission to elevate and relocate well, and leave front yard twenty-two point three feet, set at a required twenty-five feet, side yard of nine point one, say ten. Total side yards of twenty-two, set at twenty-five. Rear yard of six, instead of the required twenty-five. To erect one story addition, the rear yard of fifty, twenty-eight feet, set at a required twenty-five feet. Second story stairs have rear of one point three, instead of a required fourteen feet, decking with front yard. Fourteen point six feet, set at a required twenty-five feet, side yard of fourteen point nine feet, set at a required fifteen feet. Decking without the shower. With a side yard of nine point one feet, and rear yard of five point four feet, set at a required fifteen feet. Re-decking having a side yard of zero point three feet, set at a required five feet. All hanging, more, area ratio of thirty-nine point nine four percent. Instead of permit thirty percent, including installed hot tub, leaving front yard of forty-three point nine feet. Instead of a required sixteen feet, B W District. South side of Bayview, walking to sixteen. Seventy-nine point one nine feet, west of Beach Wall Avenue, Seagull, New York. Mr. Graham, welcome.
Good evening. Glenn Graham with Graham Associates, two fifty-six Orinoco Drive, Bright Waters, New York.
Okay, Mr. Graham, by the call.
The, the call seems very, very long. It is very long. I'm gonna shorten it right off the bat. We'd like to withdraw the decking having a side yard of point three instead of five. That's a bike rack. We're just gonna eliminate that.
So, permission to, deck having a side yard of one point three, set at a required two, five feet.
Correct.
I'll make that motion. Okay, so why don't you take us through this?
A little history. This is a bayfront house. It is surrounded by three homes that, two of them I've just been in front of the zoning board the past few months. It is the last of the homes to be lifted in this immediate area. So, this project, I just handed up copies of the COs. It's a legal, non-conforming house on an odd-shaped lot on the bay. All the setbacks that we're asking for exist today. We're doing a house lift only.
What are you doing?
We're lifting this house. I'm adding, I'm adding a hot tub that has precedent. We are also adding a, I'll call it a closet-sized addition for a stackable washer dryer. Stackable washer dryer, three by four. Not too big. This house was also subject to the zoning board appeals in two thousand and fourteen, and was granted everything that exists today.
Including the FAR thirty-nine point nine four?
No, that, it was granted at thirty-three percent, I believe, that I handed that in. The reason why it's going up is because the deck heights are changing, and we had to start including some of those in the FAR. And the two neighboring houses, you've granted up to forty percent.
What do we have as far as precedent? Thirty-nine, forty-nine?
The two neighbors next door, and forty's the new thirty. I, I think someone said that up on the board. They're all thirty-nine point eight, thirty-nine point nine. Yeah, and those are all granted within the past four or five months here. I also, to help improve this case, if you notice, Mr. Wexel, I drew and read the outline of the existing house. Since we're lifting it, I'm actually pulling it away from the back property line. Some parts of the house now are two feet away from the property line. We're gonna move it to six.
And the fronts, the front is remaining the same?
The front is gonna get two foot closer to the street, but it is bayfront. And the owner actually owns property across the walk from it as well.
Why did you elect to move it to the forward? What is that due to application?
It would decrease the rear yard setback. Currently it's at two, and it improves it to, I think, four point eight.
But maybe I'm listening to the expense.
At the expense of the front, yeah. Yeah, but it's bayfront and a walk, so I thought that would be less intrusive to the neighbors in the back.
It's right in the car.
Oh, I see. Right. Let's see. Oh, here's a very terminal, okay. Yeah, yeah.
We're about five houses in from Ocean Beach.
Yep. Yep, okay, yeah, I noticed. There's a water, you can see the water, Ocean Beach Water Tower.
Yeah, it's close to the...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Wexel, take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make the motion, grant the application.
Hold on, favor?
Thank you very much. Take care, have a good night.
Good evening. My name is Saleem Abraham. I reside at two fifty-four dash ten, Francis Lewis Boulevard, Road on New York, one one four two two.
How are you tonight?
How are you, sir?
Good.
As well. Uh, the reason I'm, we are, we are actually adjourned it was because of the garage height. That was a situation, uh, I believe we discussed regarding the driveway exceeding the thirty-five percent, to cut it back to forty percent. And we left off at, uh, uh, the, the height of the existing garage was eighteen feet. And we discussed, you know, to leave it there, and we are adjourned it to see if we have resolution as per the owner. To see if we can reduce the garage height to the legal height of fourteen feet.
I'm sorry, the garage? I, I'm looking at my notes, because you see a lot of these, so I can't... For me, it's not as far back in my mind.
Okay.
When I say I have my notes that the garage is five hundred seventy square feet?
Correct.
And I, I have a note here, why so large? Are you reducing that?
No, we're not doing the garage. We, we, the issue was the, the garage height.
It was just the height?
Yeah, eighteen feet.
But wasn't the, I mean, the garage is twenty-two by thirty-nine.
Yes, there was.
That's more than five seventy square feet, isn't it? Does anybody, Mary, do you have a calculator?
How much, twenty-two by forty-nine?
Thirty-nine by twenty, yeah, it's more.
Yeah, it's gotta be closer to, it's like eight hundred, even more. Eight, eight fifty, eight sixty, who's got it? Eight sixty-four, I guess it is. Alright, so, that's way too large. I mean, that's what struck us last night.
And last thing, the issue was, um, there was the existing part of the garage already, and the adding, uh, addition to it. The addition was lower than forty feet height of the, of the height of the bridge. So...
I'm saying, at least it was an issue for me. I have garage height eighteen point one over fourteen. And I'm looking at my notes. Here it says, garage way too large. So it was at least an issue for me. I don't know anybody else, but... So what are you doing to reduce the size of the garage, since it's only four point eight from the property?
Okay.
It's too big.
And one number we'd be able to, um, list for you guys.
Didn't you adjourn this, though, if I remember correctly, to try and prove that, when, when was this garage built again?
I think we had a CO done for, part of the garage was three hundred square feet.
Yeah.
With a CO, and after that, they had, over the years, the owners, previous owners, uh, increased the garage. And when the new owner bought the garage, that was already built already. The addition that we have right now was the, the addition, uh, prior of acquiring the dwelling. And they just, you know, refacing the garage and making it nicer. But the height was the issue. But to be honest, me personally, I didn't remember about the, the area of the garage. I know we had the discussion about the, the garage to be that big.
Well, I think, just one second, let's, let's, it said on the, on the CO, demolition of eighteen point, eighteen feet three inch by sixteen feet six, and it's detached garage in nineteen ninety-two. The demol-, demolition permit, to knock it down. And it's right on the CO. So now there's a garage there at thirty-nine by twenty-two?
No, twenty-two by thirty-nine, correct. When they bought the, when they bought the dwelling, they did the house, the garage was there with the addition.
I, I understand that, and unfortunately, we hear that a lot, but we, that, we can't base this code on how they bought the house. I know that's a terrible answer to give you, but that's not, there's nothing we can do on that. That situation.
Honestly, I thought that this was adjourned, you were dressed the size of the garage, not just the height. And we're kinda back with this huge garage, less than five feet from the property.
Because also I provided the, the new drawings also that showing that, uh, we are, you know, cutting down the garage, the, the height of the garage. That was my...
I can't understand what you're saying, sir.
I said, sorry, the issue that I remember was regarding, I know we had a situation about the garage size that was big. But when we left out was regarding the height of the garage. It was way too high, eighteen feet. And I remember we were talking about sixteen feet high before, and fourteen feet down.
I have notes, I have notes that it's too high and too close, though, because if it was under five hundred, we'd only need four feet, and you, it's over, obviously, by a lot. And the CO that you had on it, I'm, it's coming back to me. There was a, a three hundred square foot detached garage back from circa thirties. And then there was a demolition permit for the size I just referred to. And now there's this. And I, I believe that you were going back to try and work on what we can do, come back as a plan B for the, for the height and the size of this garage. And then we also have the front yard occupancy to deal with also.
The front yard, the front yard, we were bringing back to forty feet, forty, uh...
Forty percent?
Correct, because as a maximum that you, you always give us, various applications.
What about the floor ratio?
Because of the garage size, they increased the floor ratio to two, thirty-two percent, to thirty-eight percent. That's the reason why they have a high floor ratio.
Yeah, right.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Wechsler, take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to make a motion, I do reserve.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wechsler. Have a great night. Have the others.
Patrick Curtis, President of fifteen nineteen Main Street LLC. My office address, seven hundred Lakeland Avenue, Bohemia, New York, one one seven one six. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Hello, I'm Scott.
We have, before this evening, this application is actually to rebuild a building that has been on this location, as far as I can tell, for approximately one hundred years. The main building, which is fifteen, seventeen, and nineteen Main Street, was originally moved to this location in nineteen twenty-three. And the building in the back was always referred to as the barn.
As a what?
The barn. Prior owners who had the property for seventy years referred to the building in the back as the barn. It predates all zoning in the town of Isle and all building permits. And it was, the back building was added to the C O with a certificate of compliance in two thousand and eleven. The building was severely deteriorated. It had no foundation. It was simply sitting on a, on a concrete slab and was affected by, by rot, by animal damage and termites. Building was not demolished, Mr. Messina. It actually collapsed in a, in a wind event in January of this year. The, we were attempting to repair the damage, which was all in the lower two feet of the building, plus the roof rafters were separating from the ridge because the concrete slab had cracked.
So, Mr. Curtis, this, this, this building, it's going to be the same four hundred and sixty square feet, one story, no electric, like it's on the compliance?
The sole thing we'd like to do, sir, would be to add electric for lights, for safety. The building bomb would like to have exterior lighting on the building as well as interior lighting.
What about the extra curb cut you put in according to this picture? Is it going to, that, I don't believe that was that way.
That was not that way. We, we put that there because through my own experience, and I've been in Saville for thirty-five years, that is exactly where the trucks stop and unload to the restaurants and the stores right along Main Street. And I put that there so that would cause the least amount of inconvenience for vehicles wanting to pass through when the trucks are stopped. We could, of course, relocate that if that was required.
But the, the, the door used to be on the other side of this?
There was only, there were two doors. There was two pedestrian-sized doors, three foot, three foot wide doors, one on the, on the east side and one on the north side. There was no, there was no roller door. The intent for the, for the use of this building is simply for storage, no plumbing, no water whatsoever in the building. And just for storage, it would seem that a, a, a larger door would be more appropriate for use as a storage building.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Mr. Curtis, if you don't mind stepping aside a second. Good evening, just name and address for the record, please.
Marjorie Peter, eighteen Center Street, Saville, New York. My property, butts the property that they're referring to.
Yep, the gray house.
It was not blown down in a windstorm. It was gutted to the, to the frame and the, and I have, well, I have pictures of the frame. That was bowed so that it had a, that it had a controlled drop.
Can you hand them?
It's very unfortunate that we're meeting this way because if you can see, this, their foundation is twenty-eight inches to my fence line and then twenty-nine inches to my house. I can touch it. The building had been abandoned for very many, many years. It was deteriorating. It was gutted. You can see in the pictures, the frame, that's how it was left for a couple of weeks. You can see it was bowed. And then it came down. Gravity took it, not the wind. It was, it was, it was unfortunate that it was abandoned and destroyed over many, many years. This building has had problems throughout the years. There was somebody living in it. There was, there was just a history of problems. Would I love to see something nicer be used there? Yes, I have trust issues now because the, the curb cut, the entrance was moved. They started working on new footing in the foundation with no permits. It came down without permits. Nobody ever said, hey, you're this far from my building, what do you think? Nothing. It was just overnight, they started building, then somebody had to ask for a cease work order. There is outdoor dining, there are delivery trucks. My biggest concern is those three dumpsters on the corner of his property. The town has been fighting with me, without me, for two years to get those dumpsters appropriately placed because they keep pushing up against the fence line of the houses. We live there. I've been there thirty-four years. I've been in Saville for more, I'm not going to say how many. I don't cause a fuss. I never part, fight or argue with anybody, but I live there. So when the restaurants have their, their bands and their music and the outdoor dining, they're polite, ten o'clock, everybody's quiet, they go home. We live together. This is on top of my house. When that structure came down, my door was exposed to the parking lot. I had to have my fence extended so that I had some privacy. My windows.
Can I ask a question, ma'am? I know the area well, too. I grew up in Saville myself, still live there. The gentleman does have a C of C for a garage in that area. I know the other one was deteriorated and, and ravaged. We all know, anyone who lives in Saville knows the story of that building. But he does have a C of C for a detached structure.
Sal, I'm sorry. For all week, I was trying to think of the guy that was living in there. Sorry, it just hit me when you said that.
I hope Sal's not living there anymore.
No, 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 no. Nope, that was, it's just a slab now.
It's just a slab now, I know, I know. So it, it's hard for us. I, we appreciate your concern about it, but the gentleman does have a right to own what he owns.
No doubt.
And erect, I believe, what he had, nothing more, nothing less, and no further use other than storage, what he had. Are, are you, are you saying you're against even anything erected there?
No, not at all, because my, my, I have two front doors. And when that structure came down, I literally, somebody could have just walked over the fence and walked right into my front door. It was very unnerving for me. I don't have a problem with the structure. I have a problem with the, people in the town are coming to me saying he wanted to do a studio apartment. He already accepted rent for one of the stores to use it for a showroom for their furniture. So trust has been broken there. Is it going to truly, now he wants electric? Is it truly going to be storage? I would love to have a buffer between me and the parking lot. Is it going to be done right? He's already done these things without, without permission. I'm nervous. I'm nervous, my house is wood. I'm nervous that if the unit is misused, if there's. Distance so that I'm safe, yes, because that's a fire hazard for me, you know that. Go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm going to breathe. Do I mean distance or what? I would like distance so that it's not right on top of me now. I don't know if that's the same footprint, I believe it, is it the same footprint? Because they were working on it, there's fresh cement on it, there's new footer, so I don't know if that's the original footprint. But there has to be some kind of safety for me distance-wise, and I just want to be assured that it's just going to be storage. It's not going to be a showroom. Where are the dumpsters going? That's a big problem. We have been for two years fighting a safe place for these dumpsters. They keep pushing them up against the fence line. It's not safe, it's not sanitary, it smells. Now he's going to put the unit back up. Is somebody going to address that?
Well, I.
Which part?
I do agree with you on that, however.
The dumpsters in my yard.
I, I, I agree with you on the dumpsters, but they can't be put on the gentleman's property.
Oh, no, they shouldn't be, but.
And that's not.
That whole back lot, if you've ever been back there, they, the trucks parked for, to, for the stores. So now if you're going through, it's one way, you're stopped, you're not going anywhere. The, the, the turning of the entrance, is that more beneficial, less beneficial? I don't know. I just, we should come together as a community to make sure that whatever is done is done, what's in the best interest of the area.
Let me reiterate my question to you. Are you, if this gentleman puts the same frame building with just lighting, electric, no living space, no renting it out for, only for storage for the building that he owns, are you against that?
I'm not against storage, I would just like a buffer. There's literally a.
So maybe like some bushes or something like that?
No, she wants space, that's what I was going for.
Oh, I don't know if you can move the.
I don't know either.
I don't know if you can move it.
There's twenty, there's twenty-nine, twenty-eight inches or something. What, what can we, how can we buffer that so that I have?
Well, maybe Mr. Curtis can plant some trees or something like arborvitae between you two.
Are there going to be windows on that side, you know? I didn't, I don't know the plans, so I don't know.
I don't know plans, I mean, I'm just making that up because I know arborvitae is a really.
They don't like to survive in that area. Everybody puts arborvitae in.
My, my, my point is, and I appreciate your concerns, but he has a C Oed structure that came down. Whatever way it came down, it came down. He, I believe he has a right to put it back up.
I don't have a problem with the structure going back up. I, you know, there is no, there's no easement, there's no buffer, there's nothing. Because there is no building there now.
Yeah.
Is there a requirement for there to be one?
Got you. I don't know that.
Because it came down, it was going back up, and I'm like, wait, 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 wait. Can we talk about just a little distance here? But then the subwork order came in. So, you know, that's your job to tell me what can and cannot be done. Again, it's safety, it's privacy.
Let me ask this one question to Mr. Curtis. Would you be willing to take an adjournment and meet with your neighbor and see what you guys can come up with? Okay.
You see how close we are?
Well, I'm just asking. I'm just asking, he can take.
No, I'm fine with that.
He can take a short adjournment, you guys can discuss it, come back in the beginning of the year and we can hear it again. Or we can, you know, you guys can talk after this and we can vote on what we would like to vote, if we're going to vote on tonight? If you guys want an adjournment to discuss it?
I'm not argumentative, I'm nervous.
Don't be nervous. I understand your concerns, but he does, you know, from our point of view, he has a legitimate structure that came down and he has legitimate C O to put one back up for the proper use that it's C Oed for, right?
And there, and like I said, the trust was violated because of no permits and how it came down and all that. I just want to make sure that we go up in permit.
So we'll.
Nope, he wants to talk. Can he talk? Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, you can come back, Mr. Curtis, if you like, and have a conversation.
I'd like to say that as far as doing landscaping treatment, we already spoke with the Chamber of Commerce and Eileen Tisner, the president of Chamber of Commerce, about trying to improve the landscaping around the building. In particular, she was, she was concerned about from people who are going to Cafe Joel, sitting in the backyard of Cafe Joel and looking across and trying to make the, the, the street appearance of the building much more attractive than it currently is. I'd be very happy to try and put some kind of landscaping treatment between the building and the fence line. I would also be, you know, very happy to move the building further to the east if that was something that was, if it was needed.
You, you would have to check with the building department if you could move it to the east. You know, you're on that town, the town of Isle.
Right, and they, the, the, as I, as I said in the beginning, the, the building predates all zoning. So all the zoning rules came in a long time afterwards. And, but as, as, as far as moving things, I think the board is aware of that for many projects, many pieces of them. And I do try to do a premier landscaping treatment on any of our properties.
Sure. So you know, whatever you, the structure that you build there, if that's the case, it has to be used for storage?
Yes.
No, no, no showrooms that he was, is hearing about.
We actually, we actually did a lease with a store on Railroad Avenue. And the purpose was for storage, not for shore. It's, it's right, we actually did a lease and that was before the building came down.
It, it's got to be accessory to your principal building, sir. That's where, that's where it's at.
Okay. So it can be accessory to the stores that we have in the.
The stores that you have, yes, that's what it's there for.
That's fine. Then, they also have storage issues. The, and as far as, as far as the placement, if the building department was amenable to moving the building, you know, somewhat to the east and away from the fence, we would have no issues in relocating.
Okay.
But again, it's a setback from the curb line.
Yeah. So you understand that, ma'am? He's going to have to see from the building department, they'll leave him out there.
You can put that down, you've been holding that to the fleet this entire.
My moral support. This is my first.
This is yours.
My present.
So, why don't we do this? I'm proposing that we adjourn it for a week. You can speak to the building department and speak to your neighbor and figure out what you can do. And then come back next week and we'll rehear it. As long as you guys are in agreement, then you can do what you want to do, you can, you can go from there. We'll, we'll squeeze it on for you next week, that's our last meeting for the year. I just want everyone to be happy here in both situations, so. All right, so we can do that? Make, anyone wish to be, I, I, I'm supposed to be heard in this application? Make a motion that we adjourn for one week to December sixth, right? All in favor?
It'll be at six thirty P M.
Six thirty P M.
Thank you.
All right, see you next week. Take care.
Joseph Clemens, German Clemens Architecture P C, thirty-two seventy-five Veterans Memorial Highway, Suite B eleven, Ron Concombe, New York, one one seven seven nine. Thank you. So just to provide some general background of the, of the property, the subject property was previously occupied and used by Baumann Realty Associates, or Baumann Bus Company, which used the lot in connection with their operations, consisting of bus service and outdoor storage of their vehicle fleet. Such outdoor storage existed on this lot dating back to the early nineteen eighties. Our office had initially made a presentation to the planning board with regard to this property back on July twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-one in connection with a requested change of zone from Business Three to the Industrial Quarter District, which included a request for a special permit for the warehouse use and associated parking relaxations. With planning board recommendations, we proceeded to the town board and was granted approval on August twelfth of two thousand and twenty-one. The requested change of zone was recorded with the necessary departments and has an effective date of April tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. During the review process, it was recommended and encouraged. Sorry. During the review process, it was recommended and encouraged via the town of Isle's planning department that we pursue the abandonment of the southern portion of Charles Street, which is adjacent to the rear of our site.
Let me ask you something, sir. Sorry.
Yes.
Giger, is, is that your understanding as well? Yeah, I mean, that's what abandonment is, it goes to have. So that's why they're here because they can't abandon it? Is that why they're here because they can't abandon it? Not why they're here because they can't abandon it?
Right, so we, the, so.
Okay, understood. I, I don't, I mean, you can say whatever you want, but for me, you don't have to say anything else.
I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory. We went before the board. Um, I had conversations with the zoning department following that. Um, realistically, the, the portion of the road remaining is twenty-five feet in width. Uh, our, our understanding is it really can't be developed. It's basically, uh. Yeah, so if, if it was considered a rear yard, we comply.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application?
You guys have been waiting patiently back there. You're not able to.
Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Messina, I'll take your motion. All favor?
Have a great night, guys. Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, uh, second call, number eight seven seven dash twenty-two, Christina and Ryan Pembroke. Gentlemen, are you here for that application? Jay, what application are they here for? We heard it, though.
Andrew Murray. Yeah.
He said he was Andy.
Are, are you?
Sir, please step up.
This gets nailed to the neighbors. Yeah, neighbors. Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. Y- you must be the neighbor to Mr. Murray. Andrew Murray, you're the neighbor, correct?
No, sir.
You, you're not Andrew Murray?
No.
Yeah, you're the neighbor. You live next door to them?
Um, no, we live in the same house. We live in the same house. Um, I'm Elias, um, Juan Jose Flores' son. We live in twenty-three Fairtown Road, Beja, New York, eleven seven zero six.
Yeah, this is twenty-eight Fairtown Road. Andrew Murray, this, you're their neighbor. So when, what happens is when any, any premises that are but, the premises that's out on the application gets a notice. This was heard in the beginning.
Okay.
Yeah, this was.
You live next door, you get.
You get this if you live next door.
Okay.
It was all approved.
Your number twenty-three, Fairtown?
Yes.
Yeah, this is twenty-eight. So you're not.
It doesn't affect you.
It doesn't affect.
Your property isn't affected.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, no problem. Do you want this back?
Yes.
Jay, you wanna take this back from?
All right, Mr. Chairman, then, uh, we have as part of our agenda, seven applications for accessory apartment renewal for a period of three years. I make the motion that they be renewed, please.
All in favor?
Aye. Chairman, we also have twelve applications for two families, families who use only renewals for a period of three years. I make the motion that all be granted. Motion.
One piece, three in.
Second. I got the second, your second.
All favor?
And we have one, one reserved piece to be read into the record. Application number six seventy-nine dash twenty-two, Jose and Fanny Vasquez. In accordance with the proposed written decision dated November twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-two, the application is granted with that part of the application seeking permission to leave decking having been withdrawn. On motion of.
Motion, second. Aye. Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn. Second. Aye.